Haley hit dropped out of the race. And in July, with Trump as the Republican nominee and Joe Biden suddenly out of the race, we asked Emily if she was open to voting for Kamala Harris.
I really don't know enough about her as a candidate for president to say one way or the other.
For her, the debate was going to be crucial. So when it was over, Daily Producer Stella Tan called Emily back to see whether the debate had changed any of her thinking.
Hello?
Hello? Is this Emily?
Yes, it is.
How are you doing?
Not too bad. How about you?
I'm doing pretty good. So when we talked over the summer, it was right when Biden dropped out and Harris had just become the presumptive nominee, and you were still kind of getting oriented on her. And I'm wondering, right now, how close are you to making up your mind on who to vote for for president?
I'm still, I am still struggling. I'm still kind of torn. I mean, it is, it's kind of tricky. I do come from a pretty conservative family, and this hasn't been easy for them either. I think they're struggling too with which way to go. It's like kind of coming down to what's, you know, do you compromise on some of your beliefs and some of your policy positions in order to help to preserve democracy and bring us back to some level of decorum and civility?
And so what were the moments that most stood out for you from the debate? And what did they leave you thinking and feeling?
So maybe like an overall impression, I guess, of the debate that actually left me very frustrated with former President Trump was just his overall decorum, his rhetoric. My 16-year-old daughter was watching with me, and a big thing that we came back to was the opening of the debate and the fact that he made a beeline for the podium rather than trying to meet in the middle on handshake, and she had to initiate that. And then throughout the debate, I can't recall a time when he actually made eye contact with her or looked at her. And then the way that he continued to refer to "they," "they," and that may have been part of his strategy is to continue to try to tie her to Biden. But in doing that without looking at her, without going in for that handshake, without actually addressing her, to me, it was very demeaning. So that really bothered me. And then the fact that, to be honest, for the majority of the debate, he looked like my daughters did when they were toddlers, and they were not getting their own way, or they had gotten yelled at and were sitting and pouting in the corner.
You know, a lot of people have been remarking on Harris's facial expressions and gestures in response to some of the things that Trump was saying. I'm curious how her expressions landed with you, especially in this context of you wanting a president who can work across the aisle and sort of lower the temperature on the rhetoric.
For me, I guess, some of it just kind of made me laugh. And honestly, it was just like, okay, she's making this face, and I'm making the same face here at home. Like, I didn't think she was disrespectful in any way, so it didn't really sway me one way or the other.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I wanted to ask you about a couple of things you mentioned to me when we had our conversation before.
Yep.
You mentioned that the economy was a big issue for you.
Yes, definitely. The economy is still a major issue for me. To be honest, I was really disappointed in both candidates. I was really hoping you'd hear something more. For me, Donald Trump, all he was talking about was tariffs, and that's not going to fix the economy in and of itself. And so there was nothing else there from him. And Kamala, while she did have her three points, you know, she was talking about small business. She was talking about $25,000 for first-time homeowners, $6,000 for families in the first year of life. And I'm sure there's people out there for that. That was wonderful, and they were happy to hear that. I, I'm a college-educated woman, working class, in my 40s. I own a home, and I have teenage children. In the last five to seven years, our homeowner's insurance has basically doubled. How are you going to help us to continue to live in our homes, to maintain our homes? Those are the things I really would have liked to have seen from her last night, and I didn't.
Mm-hmm. So there was one more thing. You mentioned reproductive rights in our conversation last time. Do you kind of lean toward one or the other on that issue?
When it comes to, you know, reproductive rights and specifically abortion, I do have very strong feelings about the manner in which that should be utilized. I do consider myself pro-life, so more of a conservative. You know, I don't view that as a means of birth control. But I do also understand and can appreciate there has to be exceptions. And so she kind of backed away from answering how she felt about late-term abortion, and I was kind of wishing she would have talked about that. But by the same token, I was thoroughly disgusted by his comments. You know, he kept calling it abortion after birth, but if a child is born, it's not abortion, like, it's just by definition. And so essentially, you're talking about, you know, execution of children. And I, to me, that was just so off the wall. And so, I mean, and for him to continue spewing that is just sickening.
I, I know you said earlier that you were still struggling, but did the debate help you make up your mind on who to vote for?
Um, I, I don't know if I'm comfortable, even with myself to myself yet. I'm not sure what I'm hoping to hear yet. You know, I, I don't know if there's something that I'm wanting to hear. Whether it's right or wrong or makes any sense, when you grow up, certain way, whether you grow up liberal or you grow up conservative, I think it is hard for a lot of people if that's what you've always been and that's what you've known subconsciously. If you feel like you're betraying what you are and where you, you've been, even though that's not true, you know, people grow and people evolve, but it's, it's coming down to more of a matter of let's restore some civility and decorum into the White House, the sanctity of the President of the United States, that office, and let's try to start bringing people back together. You know, one thing she said last night was let the divisiveness be on the policy issues, not on all of this other unimportant stuff that we're trying to make into issues and that's essentially dividing us.
I'm wondering, if it gets to be November 5th, what do you think you'll do? Do you think you'll go to the voting booth and make the call there? Or is there a chance you might stay home or?
No, I definitely will not stay home. I definitely will vote. Oh, I know we had talked about writing in a candidate. I think after last night, I would feel more comfortable making a decision versus writing someone in off the cuff. I would say that it definitely pushed me in one direction. After watching him and listening to him and the attempts to find, you know, ways to continue to divide us in the way that he treated her last night, and the way that he treated the American public, it definitely pushed me to vote for Kamala.
This was so interesting, Emily. I'm really, really grateful to you for talking to me.
Well, I think, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Take care, Emily.
You too. Have a good night.
You too. Bye.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Over the next 49 days, we'll keep in touch with Bob, Sharon, and Emily to learn who they ultimately chose to vote for and why.
The 7:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for September 16th, 2024 hereby called to order, and I will ask our Clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volleson.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. And I call Ms. President. Tonight, I'm pleased to recognize my friend and who is Reverend James Ham, pastor of Back to Life Church. He will lead us in an invocation, and following that, I will lead us in the Pledge of Leaders. Please stand for Pastor Ham.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, Lord, we just want to say thank you for allowing us to come into this place on tonight, God. Lord, we ask you to be with us, God, as we pray for this city, God, as we pray in this meeting on tonight, God. God, you be in the midst of it, God. God, let there be peace, let there be understanding. God, help our city officials to do the business that you have called them to do. God, we just want to say thank you for this great city, God. Continue to bless it, continue to keep your hands upon this city, God. God, we forever give your name the praise, all the honor and glory. It all belongs to you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Leaders. To the land of the United States of America, and to the Republic where justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. I think most of our seats seem to be filled. We do have an overflow room downstairs, and I think it's a video down there, so you'll be able, you downstairs will be able to, to follow us. All right, the first order of business is certification of a closed meeting. I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor to offer a motion.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of City Council in attendance certified of the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Second.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask our Clerk, please, call the roll.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you. All right, the first order of business is tonight is presentations and acknowledgements. I want to, at this time, call on Doug Jackson, our Arts and Culture Coordinator, for acknowledgement. Doug, good to see you.
Good to see you, Mayor Lee. Thank you for having us, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of council. I have with me Anna Morales. We are really here tonight just to invite the public to come see the new show on the fourth floor of the municipal building. It's called Cover Story, Roanoke's, Roanoke, Roanokeers Appreciating the Region. And we did this in partnership with Leisure Media 360, and Anna is the art director for the Roanoke magazine, which this year is celebrating 50 years. Now, that's 50 years of celebrating what's, what's wonderful about our community, building community, and that's what we want to do with this show. Forty works of art were submitted as Roanoke covers. We just had about 50 people here for a small reception to, to welcome them and gave some acknowledgements and some awards. But we really want to thank the team from Leisure Media 360, who's in the back of the room, and they, they can wave. And we want to thank all the artists and all the residents who every day are creating the place that we want to live. And that's what this spirit of art and the community is all about. So thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
All right, before we get started on our public hearing, I want, I'm pleased to recognize as City Manager, Dr. Lydia Patton.
Thanks, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. I want to invite Mr. Chris Chidham, Director of Planning, to come forward and make a few remarks regarding the readoption of the text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Mr. Chidham.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, and members of City Council, you have in your packet a report from the Planning Commission that also include, included a summary of the zoning amendments as they are proposed tonight, and a 35-page study and report where we took all that we knew about the, and projected what the results would be of these zoning amendments. Also included an acknowledgement of the concerns that we heard along the way and our response to them. So we tried to be pretty comprehensive in that in our reporting to you. Just to update council, since I last briefed you back when we had a Planning Commission, Joint Planning Commission City Council meeting, council's direction was to have at least two additional meetings, and we had five. We had two that we sponsored. I want to thank the Raleigh Court Civic League and the neighbors in South Roanoke for hosting us and with a pretty spur-of-the-moment meetings that were both well-attended and, and then we had a meeting with, where we discussed with the Northwest Neighborhoods, Neighborhood Development Roundtable, and had a very good discussion at that point. Appreciate them dedicating one of their meetings to, to talk about these. And I also want to thank the planning staff that worked on this. All the way back to 2018, we still have the same planning staff intact. Julian Papa, Wayne Leftwich, Catherine Gray, Brittany Gardner, and Philip Moore, who've worked very hard on this, as well as Emily Clark, the Secretary to the Planning Commission. I don't have an additional briefing for you tonight, but I am here, of course, to answer questions and provide clarifications as they are needed, so I will be on hand to provide that service to you. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Let me just set the ground rules for tonight. We're going to give everybody that comes up to speak two minutes, because there are a lot of speakers here tonight. So you got two minutes, so make sure you organize your thoughts down to, they can get in in too many period of time. Now, when the, when the buzzer goes off, I'll, I'll let you complete your sentence, if it's in the sentence, but we're not going to let you do a whole paragraph for another page when the horn goes off. So I'm going to let you know that right as we start. Let me start. Want to hear from everybody who signed up to speak, that's what, to speak, that's what we do. But we want to make sure you understand the rules that we have set forth. All right, everybody clear on that? I let my colleagues know that too. Two minutes, the horn goes off. So with that being said, Mr. Speaker, we're ready to get going on the public hearing.
Yep. Ready?
Ready. All right.
Are you going, are you going to read the ordinance? Okay. Let's go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, yeah. Yeah, I will. Okay. All right, we got, we got, we have to, we have an ordinance. Just want to read this, read this when we get to it. All right, the public hearing is a request of the City of Roanoke for proposed amendment to Chapter 36.2 zoning of the Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended by amending and reordaining, adding or deleting code sections to remove barriers for the creation of affordable housing, to make the zoning code consistent with state code. The proposed zoning amendments are similar in substance to the zoning amendments adopted by the City Council on March 18th, 2024. Mr. Chris Chidham, planning and building and develop, developments is the spokesperson for this ordinance. So we have an ordinance.
Read the ordinance.
Second.
All right, I'll ask our Clerk to please read the title paragraph.
All right. This may be a little long, but I'll read. An ordinance, ordaining, reordaining, amending, reamending, adopting, and/or readopting Section Title, Section 36.2-105, Rules of Interpretation and Construction. Section 36.2-201, Establishment of Districts. Section 36.2-205, Dimensional Regulations. Section 36.2-300, Purpose. Section 36.2-310, Purposes of Residential Districts. Section 36.2-311, Use Table for Residential Districts. Section 36.2-312, Dimensional Regulations for Residential Districts. Section 36.2-314, Purposes of, of multiple-purpose districts. Section 36.2-315, Use Table for Multiple-Purpose Districts. Section 36.2-316, Dimensional Regulations for Multiple-Purpose Districts. Section 36.2-322, Use Table for Industrial Districts. Section 36.2-327, Use Table for Planned Unit Development Districts. Section 36.2-328, Dimensional Regulations for Planned Unit Development Districts. Section 36.2-332, Neighborhood Design Overlay District. Section 36.2-336, Comprehensive Sign Overlay District. Section 36.2-402, Accessory Apartments. Section 36.2-403, Accessory Uses and Structures. Section 36.2-405, Bid and Breakfast, Home Stay and Short-Term Rental Establishments. Section 36.2-409.1, Dwellings. Section 36.2-410, Fences, Walls, Arbors, and Trellises. Section 36.2-411, Gasoline Stations. Thirty-six, Section 36.2-419, Motor Vehicle Repair or Service Establishment. 36.2-429, Temporary Uses. Section 36.2-431, Town Houses and Row Houses. Section 36.2-551, Development Plans Generally. Section 36.2-552, Basic Development Plans. Section 36.2-622, Exempt Lighting. Section 36.2-644, Overall Tree Canopy Requirements. Section 36.2-646, Facet Planning. Section Facade Planning, I'm sorry. Section 36.2-647, Buffering and Screening. 36.2-654, Parking and Loading Area Standards. Section 36.2-668, On Premises Signs Generally. Section 36.2-669, Changeable Copy Signs and Electronic Reader Board Signs. Section 36.2-817, Powers and Duties, Appendix A, Definitions of Chapter 36.2. Zoning of the Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended for the purposes or of ordaining, reordaining, amending, reamending, adopting, and/or readopting the following code sections to update, clarify, and make the city's zoning ordinance easier to use for its citizens and consistent with state law and the city's comprehensive plan, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Madam President.
You get a gold star.
Thank you.
All right. I again want to recognize Mr. Chidham, if he has any further comments before we get going. Okay. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing now for those citizens wishing to be heard. And I'm going to ask our Clerk to please call those citizens in the order that they signed up.
All right. I'm going to call you three at a time, and be ready when the next person steps down, please. Isabel Thornton, Anthony Stavola, and Jan Keister.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Councilmembers. I'm here on behalf of Restoration Housing, a local nonprofit development company that specializes in affordable housing. As a developer who works with vacant and blighted properties that need to be revitalized into affordable housing, it goes without saying that I support the proposed zoning text amendments. What I think is important to consider is the outcome that everyone shares and hopes for on both sides of this discussion tonight. We all want to see less blight and vacancy. Those arguing against these amendments fear rental housing and multifamily housing because they've seen disengaged landlords who have previously constructed multifamily apartments that then suck the life out of older homes and buildings, which subsequently causes blight, a decrease in property values, crime, vandalism, and attacks, and attacks on our city's resources to react to these conditions. I share the same concern for these problems in our city. However, I don't believe that the answer to these problems is found in keeping our existing inclusionary zoning. Neither do I think that rental housing and multifamily housing are the source of the problem. The negative stigma against rental housing has long been an issue I've had to fight against. I believe it to be antiquated, inaccurate, and race-based. To fear rental and multifamily housing as the source of our neighborhood's problems is to live in the past and to not have trust and faith in our city's future. If we are interested in reducing blight, vacancy, and crime, then it seems clear to me that we should be supporting this amendment as it is a critical tool to help counter the negative effects of our vacant buildings and vacant lots. These amendments allow developers to create new housing in these spaces where lots and buildings will sit dormant otherwise. It's also worth noting that most neighborhoods that currently feature single-family homes are not at risk for these changes to alter their character. It is entirely cost prohibitive for developers to acquire, then demolish, and then build new construction in these areas. We live in a city with countless available vacant lots or vacant buildings that deserve reinvestment, and those are the areas that will be positively impacted by these changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you.
I'm actually gonna start off by agreeing with a lot of what the previous speaker said. I want to mention a couple of things fairly quickly. First of all, I wanted to point out that you've had comments sent to you by others, including a former director of planning and former city attorney, that talk about some of the problems and the issues that I won't be talking about tonight. I do wanna stress that published studies have shown that however well-intended, these types of zoning changes neither address affordability or significantly impact supply, and that's been shown in multiple studies. Mr. Hackworth mentioned in his communication to you, "Our attempts to engage in a meaningful conversation and talk about possible compromises to address neighborhood concerns." This was undertaken at the request of a consulting attorney hired by you all, the city. Unfortunately, these conversations showed unwillingness on the part of the planning department to consider any changes of substance, and so here we are again. As far as exclusionary zoning goes, you can walk around the streets of most of our neighborhoods, and you'll see that that's not what actually exists. The Planning Commission has heard these concerns, and as you know, has gone on record now as opposing the zoning amendments in their current form. And in addition, all council candidates from across the political spectrum have gone on record in opposition, as well as two of the three mayor candidates. So, tonight, you have an opportunity to choose another path, because there are things that we all agree on. In conversations that I've had with groups all across the city, there are goals that we share. These include the need for more affordable housing, the need to more forcefully address problems with blight, vacant lots, and the need to develop meaningful partnerships to address these. We can choose a different course, one where city staff meets with neighborhood residents, looks at housing conditions in their areas, vacant lots, housing needs, and develops a plan that addresses their needs in their neighborhood instead of a broad-brush approach. The plan might include incentives for developers to develop mixtures of duplex, multifamily, and single-family housing in vacant areas using design guidelines, rehabbing older housing, and developing partnerships and rezonings. It's time to move on from controversy and conflict to collaboration and compromise. We're ready, I hope you are. Thank you.
I'm Jan Keister of Marshall Avenue Southwest, representing the Old Southwest Neighborhood. Recently, despite a lot of community opposition, commissioners in the town of Gainesville, Florida voted in a zoning plan similar to our March amendments to increase the housing supply in the city by eliminating single-family zoning. Residents hated the new zoning so much that they got rid of the commissioners and elected new leadership. Just hours after being sworn in, the new commissioners voted to reverse the zoning plan. Roanoke is in a similar situation. The Old Southwest Neighborhood requests that you vote on a resolution now to start the process of repealing the zoning amendments passed in March. The good, excuse me, the good news is that if you act now, none of you will be put in a risky situation over this issue. It doesn't matter if you like or dislike the March zoning amendments. What matters is that you care enough about Roanoke residents to listen to their many concerns about these amendments, and demonstrate this by creating and voting on a resolution to direct planning staff to start the process. The repeal process takes months. This means that you have time to review new research before you decide on repealing or changing the amendments. Many people are confused about this process and think that voting no tonight means that the amendments will be repealed. Tonight's vote currently is only to make minor changes. To start the repeal process, this resolution will have to be added. A big reason to vote to start the repeal process tonight is that this is already becoming a contentious topic for council candidates, as well as the object of two lawsuits. You can postpone the whole issue until well after the election and have plenty of time to study recent research, negotiate compromises, and focus on strategies tailored to address our housing needs. Thank you.
Next speakers, William Hackworth, Dr. William Blaylock, and Kathryn Greenberg.
Mayor, good to be here. Even if I were to talk really, really fast, I don't think I could possibly cover all of the things I'd like to tell you about the ordinance you have before you tonight. I did send you a six-page letter, and I hope you've taken the time to review the letter and the reasons why our neighborhoods have a problem with what you're proposing. My basic argument is you're throwing too much at our neighborhoods all at once. It's very telling if you look at the ordinance that you have for you tonight. Look at the section on purpose of residential districts. You'll notice you are striking the language that says the purpose of a residential district is to protect a residential district. You're striking that and replacing it with a statement that the purpose of residential districts is to provide opportunities for compatible home-based entrepreneurship. And that, that's part of the problem I think we have, it's the unknown with all of the byright uses you're adding to the ordinance. I've been calling my opposition the four whammies that you're throwing at the city. One of them, you're abolishing single-family zoning districts entirely throughout the city, and you're adding a lot of byright uses to the ordinance. You're greatly increasing the allowed density in our neighborhoods. On my little lot, where we have one house, about nine thousand square feet, it's a corner lot, so someone could build four units on there. They could have up to eight unrelated people living in them. I mean, it probably would never happen, but that's what your ordinance would allow. You could have thirty-two people living there, and if they all had a car, there are no on-street parking requirements in residential districts anymore. So where's everybody gonna park? We have enough trouble as it is. I was initially troubled by the fact that a couple years ago, you added what are called accessory dwelling units to the zoning ordinance. Every single-family home in the city can now build what we used to call mother-in-law apartments in their backyard. Thank you.
I'm William Blaylock, and I appreciate the opportunity to address council. Uh, I was impressed by the website that presented these amendments. They talk about equality and equity. Well, uh, as everybody knows, the old, old zoning things went away in the spring, but now the Planning Commission voted against the one that just got voted in. But if you look at the ones that just got voted in about, uh, single-family residences, it's all about equality, which means some guy can come in there and build whatever he wants to on your property, and you have no recourse. Now, the previous regulations apply to equity. In other words, they take into consideration that you've put money into the cost of your house, and you've kept it up and paid your taxes, and so you have some equity, and they're trying to do the fair thing for the homeowner. And I would suggest that the council, uh, go back to the old system and start thinking out of the box to find other ways to have affordable housing, particularly anything that can be done to rehab a lot of these houses. And finally, I'd like to make a challenge to the council and to Luke Ware at the newspaper. Uh, I think he needs to do some investigative reporting. I was trying to find out what happened at eight, eight oh two, uh, Oakwood Drive, and Mr. Chidham informed me that what happened over there was there's a federal law that allows drug rehab facilities to be put in. I think the, we need a little research and make sure that people in the city know about this, and maybe get the Attorney General of Virginia, our congressman, and our senators to see if they can change the federal law that allows that. Thank you very much.
I have documents for council and for the clerk to add to the file. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lee and council members. I'm Kathy Greenberg, and I'm confused. And I think you will be too when you take a look at the documents I'm sharing with you. You have a copy of the original resolution of June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. It was referred to the Planning Commission to repeal the zoning amendments made in the March eighteenth ordinance and to adopt zoning ordinance, amendments, sorry, similar in substance. The second document you have is a copy of the public notice that appeared in the Roanoke Times on August second for the Planning Commission meeting. You'll note, and I've highlighted it for you, it says that this meeting is taking place with respect to the proposed amendments. Thirty-six point two zoning of the Code or the City of Roanoke as amended to ordain, to reordain, amend, reamend, adopt, and/or readopt, and to the extent necessary, repeal the March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four zoning amendments. You'll note the word repeal, because that doesn't appear in the next document you're about to take a look at. That is a copy of the notice that was placed in the Roanoke Times on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, for this meeting. It says, "The City Council gives notice of its intent to consider for adoption the proposed amendment..." Sorry, um, "as amended to ordain, reordain, amend, reamend, adopt, and/or readopt the March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four." It does not include the word repeal. I'm asking for clarification on the difference in the two documents, and would hope that you ask for the same and explain it to the public. Thank you.
The next three speakers, Robert Kelp, Nick Hagan, and David Harrison.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Robert Kelp. I'm the owner of Blue Ridge Residential Incorporated and managing member of Urban Infill Partners, LLC. I'm a builder and architectural preservationist. I'm here today in support of the readoption and continuation of the new zoning amendments as modified. The reason I support these changes is we have a housing affordability problem, and it's driven by a shortage of quality housing at all price points. I think the amendments will address these issues, or help address these issues, using market forces and without government subsidization. Economics drive development. Increasing density will instigate vacant lot development at market prices. Land and existing housing values vary greatly across our city, but increased allowable density will naturally direct development to where it makes sense for builders to profitably build. Absent government grants or special tax breaks, developers will only build where and what makes the most economic sense. They're unlikely to build apartments on West Ridge, as well as, and, and, uh, then build McMansions on Day Avenue. In the former, the land is too valuable, and the latter, there's no market. We can monitor and modify our zoning code reactively. We are not Arlington, we are not Charlottesville. Let's be honest, when it comes to growth and employment, we're not even Lynchburg. The problems with explosive population growth, gentrification, single-family home replacement in communities like Arlington are not what we are facing here. These zoning amendments have been carefully designed to promote density and lower, help lower, uh, housing costs. I believe these changes will promote even more vibrancy if given a chance to bear fruit over the next couple of years. These amendments are specifically designed to honor the varied housing types and architectural diversity that was common in our most cherished neighborhoods when they were built. We can monitor how these changes are affecting neighborhoods, make modifications in reaction to unwanted outcomes. We have the unfortunate luxury of slow growth. Let's take advantage of that to promote, to promote great neighborhoods and affordability for all. Thank you.
Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of City Council. For those of you all who don't know, my name is Nick Hagan. I am one of the candidates running for Roanoke City Council. I'm at, but I'm not here tonight to talk about the campaign. I'm gonna talk about asking you all as a citizen to vote no on these amendments. And the reason why is that I have many, many concerns that these will act in a way which are counter to the exact reasoning for the zoning. Things like redlining, things like the, our history with segregation, you know, these things are things I believe that are gonna be exacerbated by this passage, because developers will likely look towards places which have had economic, been economically disadvantaged in order to develop. And as a result, we will see these prices, you know, people buy their, people will have to sell. More to the point, though, I've seen, I've attended many of these council meetings, and I've seen the concerns that grassroots organizations have had and bringing to council. You know, oftentimes, they are ignored or appears to be ignored or not listened to. I would highly encourage you all to listen to people. You know, you're probably gonna hear a lot of people tonight that are against this, and I would highly recommend you all to consider voting no on this amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm David Harrison. I emailed comments to you that included most of what I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna leave out with the two-minute, some of the things that I had hoped to be able to say. But I wanna call your attention to the most comprehensive review to date of localities that have upzoned as the planning staff proposes that has resulted in a zero-point-eight percent increase in housing supply within three to nine years of reform passage, but not in reducing housing costs or in increasing availability of lower costs. That study is attached to my written comments. Also, in last Wednesday's Roanoke Times, it was reported that the Chair of the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors said in context of considering school capacity, quote, "We have made the wrong choice by putting townhomes and apartment buildings in a community where there are single-family homes and plenty of capacity at the elementary school." They're going in the opposite direction that the city wants to do. I also have studies that show a positive correlation between reducing urban blight and lowering crime rates. Reducing crime is a goal of the city, and addressing dilapidated housing plays a role. I support Restoration Roanoke. These zoning amendments are not necessary to do what they do. It's a good organization, and you should support them. The planning department should have a seat at the table, but it should not be driving the conversation. The school system, the police department, and other city departments should be included. Relevant nonprofits and informed citizens should have a seat at the table. With the benefit of this new data that was not available when you started this process that shows that these zoning amendments don't work, I ask that you not approve the zoning amendments and begin the process of appealing, repealing those reportedly adopted last March.
Owen McGuire, Robert Brown, Denise Tucker.
I know Owen McGuire is here. I'm gonna text him. He has some trouble just hearing. I hope he's in this room. He might be downstairs because of the overflow.
Yes, he can hear, and if he, if you're downstairs, Mr. McGuire, you can come on up. So we will start with Robert Brown, followed by Denise Tucker.
Thank you so much for hearing me out tonight. I first came to Roanoke in two thousand and ten to be part of the first class at Virginia Tech Corelli and School of Medicine, and I have wanted to return for so many years when I was away in Baltimore studying and completing my education. I'm now triple-boarded in internal medicine, emergency medicine, and critical care, and I can think of no greater welcome than what you passed in March, a chance to live here. When I first returned... When I first returned to this beautiful city, I could not truly find a place to live that would match me. I know that contrary to my dapper appearance, I am not a 1920s railroad baron, and so I was not able to purchase several million-dollar home on Patterson that requires repair. Truly, the housing that we have is beyond my reach for the most part. To have housing of the middle level where a young professional who is paying off loans has a place to live is the greatest welcome, and I do want to live here. When I came here in 2010, I found the kindest, most welcoming people, and I still find that today. I know that when I first moved back, I had to rent, and in renting, I know that I took away property that would have been rented by others, and I have seen those others moved into housing, which I would consider substandard, and I have seen people who are in substandard housing move into my emergency department. I come to you from a crowded day in the emergency department where I met at least one patient who was certainly there because of medicines that could not be refrigerated on the street and others who were there because there was no place to keep their oxygen from being stolen, and they are literally running out of air. I appreciate what you did in March, and I hope you stick to your guns. Thank you.
My name is Owen McGuire. Thank you, council members and Mr. Mayor, for listening to me tonight. I'm here to speak to you all about the Planning Commission's proposed zoning amendments, which now the Planning Commission has reversed itself and voted no to its own previous zoning proposal. I'm sure I speak for a great number of Roanoker's when I, landowners who are very concerned with these amendments. Most homeowners I talk to believe the property values could very well be negatively affected if these amendments are allowed to stand. These amendments would make it easy for developers to come into single-family neighborhoods and pack them with cheap, quality, multi-unit dwellings. When people in Roanoke City purchased their homes, single-family homes, they came because that's what they wanted. Not an apartment, not a trailer, not a condo or other accommodation. They wanted a home with a yard, and neighbors with similar dreams. They did not want to have to worry about their property value and enjoyment being threatened by high-rise apartments, multi-units, duplexes going in next door. If the city really wanted to know how single-family people felt about these zoning amendments, they should have mailed out a questionnaire to all the citizens and let them reply instead of telling them, "Come to a library, write down your questions, and maybe we'll get back to you." Last Thursday, our Grandin Court Neighborhood Association had a meeting regarding the following resolution, and they voted on it. The Grandin Court Neighborhood Association strongly urges Roanoke City Council and the Mayor to vote no on the zoning ordinance amendments proposed for September 16th, 2024. These changes pose a significant threat to the well-being of our neighborhood in that they will diminish our property value, sow seeds of distrust between neighbors, provide no new affordable housing, create parking problems, strain our utility systems, and threaten the stability and character of our neighborhood. I hope the council, mayors will vote no on these amendments and start the process to repeal the zoning amendments to protect single-family homeowners now and in the future. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Denise Tucker, and I am the owner of nonprofit Abundant Living Estates, and I stand before you today asking you if you will keep the amendments that you have and not repeal them. For home building, we have a wealth of people that are without homes in the city, and I look at you all, I look at the members, the people that are here tonight, and we all have a home to go to and lay our heads down, but there are so many people out here that do not. And you stated that it would take the private sector. I am the private sector, and I just started a nonprofit because I don't want the norms as they have been. I want to build affordable housing. I want to put it, if you look at my business plan, we want to make sure that the people that live in these homes respect the homes that they live in and live in a vibrant community and are surrounded by people that will lift them up. That is what my organization is for, and I ask that you all think about that when we look at the large number of people that are unsheltered at this time. I'm passionate about this. I believe you are too, and I believe there are others in this room that are as well. I'm a single-family home, I live in a single-family home. I welcome having neighbors, having vitality in my neighborhood, and there is a way to do this that won't drag our neighborhoods down, but it will be something that will lift us all up. I believe when one is lifted up, we're all lifted up, and so that is why I'm asking that you all would consider just doing what you said you would do and make sure that our neighborhoods and our communities are vibrant and well-to-do.
Virginia Sweet, Mayor, former Mayor David Bowers, and Kathleen Talbot.
Greetings, Mayor Lee, and members of the council. My name is Virginia Sweet, a resident of Roanoke City. I'm speaking in favor of the zoning reforms on behalf of Church Women United, a diverse group of women with over 120 members representing 40 congregations, nine denominations, and four racial/ethnic groups. We seek social justice. We advocate for equity, the unhoused, and those living in poverty. The proposed zoning reform has divided residents into at least two camps. It represents change thereby in certainty. It does not propose that this is the solution for all of our ills by any means, but it's a starting point. And there are many arguments on both sides and pros and cons, but I'm only going to focus on one: equity. Single-family-only zoning represents part of the scaffolding that continues systemic racism. Although many racially-based biased laws and policies that led to housing discrimination have been rescinded, we need only to look at the four quadrants of our city to see there's more work to be done. Zoning for single-family-only dwellings perpetuates patterns of segregation. It prevents equity. It stymies generational wealth transfer, and it allows stereotypes and racist beliefs that thrive when relationships are not built with neighbors who are different than self. To dismantle systemic racism, we must remove such barriers. It is just one tiny piece. More needs to be done, and it is government's job to promote the public good and institute policies that are in the public interest. Protecting property values of some is not the role of government. Equity is in the public interest. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Bowers. We're not going to have any yelling out. I can understand applaud, applauding, and so, but let's keep your thoughts to your cell phone on things. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I suggest you vote no on the proposed new citywide rezoning and repeal the earlier approved ordinance. One member of council has described the new proposal as an equalization effort. What would you have us do? Have all Americans live in the same drab apartment units that we see in other countries in the world? I suggest the new proposal will not result in equalization but will result in commercialization of our, of our neighborhoods. Landlords and developers will freely buy any single-family home in the city and chop it up into two, four, six, or eight apartments. Roanoke deserves better than that. You spent four to six months going one way on this and then another. Let's put this to rest tonight. Let's keep the system we've got, that we've got now. It's worked well for Roanoke for the last 50 years. Reject this new social engineering scheme. Instead, protect our single-family homes and preserve our residential neighborhoods here in Roanoke, and vote no tonight and repeal the prior ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I am speaking today on behalf of the Blue Ridge Interagency Council on Homelessness to voice our support for the city's proposed zoning amendments. The BRIC is the governing body of our local continuum of care, which coordinates our region's efforts to prevent, treat, and end homelessness. As we know, homelessness is an urgent challenge facing our city and region. The proposed amendments will help reverse exclusionary zoning practices, increasing housing supply. They will help address the structural factors that cause housing instability. If we are serious about addressing homelessness in our community, then we must be willing to change the underlying policies that cause it. As has been presented, recent studies have noted the defect of affordable housing in our region. Households are mismatched with their affordability range, which pushes lower-income earners out of the market and onto our streets and into our shelters. While housing in our city is becoming less affordable, homelessness in our region is increasing. This is not a coincidence. Our continuum of care's 2024 point-in-time count identified a 20% increase in overall homelessness. Unsheltered homelessness has increased by 406% since 2019. Only 66 of the 116 individuals who are providers assisted in obtaining housing vouchers last year were able to refine housing and utilize their voucher, in part because of the severe shortage of units. Current policy overwhelmingly favors single-family development and excludes the development of other types. Excluding the development of a variety of housing types limits surprise, limits supply and increases demand. This leads to higher rent, eviction, and homelessness. The proposed amendments will increase choice, supply will increase as policy barriers are removed, rental costs will stabilize over time, and homelessness will decrease as housing becomes more affordable. We encourage neighboring localities to join the city and to develop a regional solution and to invest in rental housing targeted to our lowest-income populations. The scope of the challenge requires regional cooperation. Establishing a regional housing trust fund and policy planning across jurisdiction could have a real meaningful impact. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm Jim Garrett. I live at 3652 Keegy Road. I am right beside the recent Medmont approval for the 24 townhomes. Under the old zoning, that would have probably been set up more for 12-town homes or maybe 12-family homes, but with the reduced setbacks, now that they can put in 24-town homes, and that's going to turn into a mess. Some of us in the neighborhood brought suit because that. I foresee that if the zoning goes across a city like that, there will be more lawsuits because there will be more violations of law. I'm really just kind of amazed that everybody thinks that this is going to bring affordable housing to Roanoke. I have spent hours and days and weeks working through my campaign trying to figure all this out, and I can't find a single study across the United States that says it brings affordable housing. The development beside me, the development across from the coffee pot, the townhouses start at 450,000 and top out at just over 550,000. The houses across from the coffee pot I hear are going to start out at about 600,000. We've added 768 apartments on 460. You just approved for 750 more, and I think the starting price for a one-bedroom is like $1,200 a month. We've done nothing to get affordable housing. None of this is bringing affordable housing because the developers are saying, "Now I can make more money by cramming more stuff in here." If we really wanted affordable housing, we wouldn't spend $14.5 million on Eureka Park. We'd figure out a way to pull a couple million dollars off that and put it in the land trust and try to help Habitat for Humanity by build affordable housing.
Good evening, members of Roanoke City Council. I thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. While I understand the intent behind these amendments, I strongly urge you to take the time to consider all of the important factors that may warrant a vote against them, or at least a vote allowing additional time to study them and to learn of their possible long-term impact on our neighborhoods, and most importantly, the impact on your constituents' single most important, largest investment: their home. First, your approval of these zoning amendments is risking the disruption and possible destruction of our current city neighborhood's community character. Your approval of these amendments could also have an adverse economic impact on our neighborhoods as single-family owners choose to live elsewhere. And while these amendments aim to stimulate affordable housing development, the potential for building inappropriate developments relative to the existing neighborhood structures and streetscapes will devastate our neighborhood's current character. And lastly, it's essential to address the environmental and infrastructural challenges associated with these amendments, as their approval will lead to increased parking of vehicles on already narrow neighborhood streets and create a burden on fire and rescue vehicles attempting to respond to neighborhood emergencies, while placing an additional strain on our aging infrastructure like our antiquated water and sewer systems. I strongly encourage this council to consider the long-term impact these changes may have on our current neighborhood's quality of life, as hundreds of lots, derelict homes, and industrial buildings sit vacant all around the city awaiting to be redeveloped and placed back onto our city's tax rolls with the affordable housing choices our city needs. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Taylor Stone. I am in favor of the zoning amendments. Little background, I've worked for the YMCA for years. I work at the airport for the airlines. I'm a Realtor. I'm a builder. Do a little bit of everything, but I get to talk to a lot of people, and when they find out that I deal in housing, they ask me questions about housing. Somebody very wise said, "Talk about the people. Talk about the people." We've heard macro things, I'm going to get into a micro. Right now, I just got approval. I've got a house in Old Southwest that I have been renovating, and I'm going to rent it out. Now, that house is a three-bedroom, three-full-bath home, will probably rent $1,800, $1,900 a month. Certainly not affordable, but feels a neat. I just got approval with Architectural Review Board to put an accessory dwelling unit at it. That accessory dwelling unit is going to be 400 square feet. A friend of mine, her son works at the YMCA downtown. He would love to find something affordable to rent. She says, "How much are you going to rent that for?" I said, "Five or $600 a month." She says, "Would you please let him have that when you get done with it?" Now, that's not going to be the only one I'm going to do. I'm going to do more. Again, what can we do for the individual people? Thank you.
My name is Joe Bryson, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. I'm speaking in support of the readoption of zoning amendments. Two of Roanoke's most significant challenges are housing affordability and our high- Two of Roanoke's most significant challenges are housing affordability and our high degree of segregation. The zoning reform moves us in a positive direction in both areas. Housing affordability was bad in 2020, when the housing study was released, and has worsened substantially in the past four years. Low- and moderate-income households struggle to pay their rents or mortgages. Many of these families get by on one income. They are schoolteachers, police officers, artists, service workers, and others in those income categories. Roanoke ranks as one of the most segregated cities in Virginia and the country. This reality is the result of a long history of city policies and actions undertaken with the purpose of segregating black-and-white residents. By right, single-family zoning that existed in half of the city at the beginning of this year was a vestige of that history. Reforming zoning was a unique opportunity to improve housing affordability and lessen the degree of segregation in our city. It is also unique in that it is completely within our control. The zoning reform enacted in March is not a silver bullet, but will enable significant benefits over time and is part of a thoughtful, comprehensive strategy. The zoning reform was designed to increase housing supply through increased density and to better match housing types with the current projected needs of our population. Finally, I commend the council for adopting the March zoning amendments and encourage you to stay the course on their implementation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I am Kristi Wills, and I'm a native Roanoker, and I only own the property that I live in, my primary residence, except for my dad's fishing hole in Arcadia. And if we have to talk about that, that'll be something else that we would need to get into. I've lived in multiple neighborhoods as a Roanoker since the 1970s. I've lived in Northwest, I've lived in Raleigh Court, and I've lived in the Franklin Road area. I love the city, and the only time I didn't live in the city as an adult was when I couldn't afford it. And I lived out in a giant, soulless apartment complex out in the county until I could afford to move back as quickly as possible. I recently learned that my grandmother, who I only knew her as living on our dairy farm in Bodatot, she lived in the city briefly in the 1930s when she was a young woman. I found this out recently. She never learned to drive, but it didn't matter because she lived in a multifamily housing complex on Elm Avenue. And she walked to work at the phone company, and she walked to the neighborhood market. And she lived there until she got married, and it was ideal for her. I think that she was born in 1914, but I think that she would recognize and appreciate the zoning amendments that are on the floor before us, and I hope that we'll be able to keep. As my kids become young adults, I'd love for them to find a place for themselves here, and having more choices for affordable housing is key. Our economy is productive and innovative, but where does the surplus go? It goes into housing right now. And many of the structures in our area haven't been improved. They just cost more to rent or to buy. The zoning changes will allow more people who want to work and live in Roanoke to be able to afford to live here. I thank you for the opportunity to address you.
My name's Frida Cathcart. I'm the district director representing Roanoke City on the Soil and Water Conservation Board. When you see me wear the shirt, that's the shirt that I wear representing that. Earlier today, I talked about how the staff had framed this as a housing homeless racist issue and why that wasn't appropriate to do. And now you see the results, confusion from the people that are here. I want to focus on the part, and which I've been asking for over a month, requesting to have a meeting with the current interim manager to discuss things such as the tree canopy in Roanoke and how this mass rezoning affects us. This is the year of the tree. You all passed a climate action plan to treat it like an emergency. Today, over eighteen-plus inches fell in one place in North Carolina in a short period of time. That is our reality. This isn't speculation. You want to talk about housing? What do you think's going to happen in Roanoke if we get eighteen inches here? What is going to protect us in our flood resilience? It's the trees, and we've been losing the tree canopy. We cannot plant our way out of it. We must look at what we currently have and protect it. And this broad stroke of rezoning without any accountability of how it's affecting your neighbors, the people downstream, is irresponsible in 2024. You must start the process to repeal those amendments. Now, can there be improvements in Roanoke City? Of course. There can always be room for improvement, but it needs to be done with comprehensive evaluation and implementation and full, meaningful community engagement so people aren't frustrated and confused and spend all of your time sitting here. Thank you for this opportunity.
My name is Lindsay Erby. This is my amazing mother, Lynn Erby. I was born and raised here. I recently moved back from Richmond, Virginia. I lived there for about nine years. I've been renting my entire adult life. I'm twenty-eight years old, and I would just like to take this chance to speak to the importance of affordable housing for myself and for other young professionals. Had I not had the motivation to be closer to my family, I'm not sure I would have worked as hard to find somewhere to live here. It took about a total of six months to find somewhere in a relatively safe area that I could afford. The compromise, though, was foregoing privacy. In a duplex or a multifamily home, you have more privacy. I ended up in a very large complex. Luckily, I have great neighbors, but I don't really get to get away from them. So I really just wanted to kind of highlight that. It took me, it took my parents, it took my sister, my friends, my boyfriend, looking for six months to find somewhere that was still a compromise for me. And I'm going to turn it over to my mom here to talk to you a little bit more.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Our medical company has been taking care of Roanoke Valley's medical needs for over twenty-eight years. And within the last several years, we've become supportive partners with VT Corollian School of Medicine, and we've been helping our medical professionals basically finding them homes and placing them in appropriate housing. We've heard countless times, over and over, that medical professionals are leaving our community due to the limited housing choices. We would love to see our community grow and prosper, so thank you for pushing this amendment forward. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, members of city council. I hope you're well. Mr. Fitzpatrick, I hope your hand is okay. I hope it heals quickly.
Maybe someday.
My name is Frazier. I live in Old Southwest, and I'm a graduate student in the Health Sciences based here in Roanoke. I will try to keep my statement brief, as I have more to say in public matters later, but I do first want to start with the observance of how privileged many of us are to have a home to live in with a roof over our heads. I ask you all to please vote yes for zoning reforms that allow opportunities for more affordable housing in mixed-income neighborhoods. In comparison to segregating lower-income people, policy research by Schwartz et al. shows that mixed-income neighborhoods provide improved health benefits, increased access to safer neighborhoods, resourced schools, as well as better-maintained housing, and also improved social networks. In short, this is not only about providing critically-needed housing for people, but also about providing better health and quality of life for us all by diversifying incomes in our neighborhoods. So I ask you, council, to please do what evidence shows to benefit people's lives by voting for rezoning that favors multifamily housing and thereby mixed income and more affordable housing. Thank you.
Randolph Gregg, Richard Rosario, and James Settle.
Members of council, when I was growing up here in Roanoke, I'm going to tell you about the years I've... But I inherited a house in Old Southwest. It was popularly known as a St. Louis duplex, but not a duplex in the sense that most people use that terminology today. It was ten rooms upstairs, ten rooms downstairs. And during the Depression, my grandmother, who at that time was a widow, had the upstairs chopped up into two apartments, two five-room apartments. I never thought I would live to see the day when a five-room apartment was considered small. And when we advertised it for rent, why, people would come up and look at it and say, "Well, it's nice, but I don't think we have enough furniture to fit." And I said, "Well, why don't you just close the doors on the rooms that you don't have the furniture for and live in three rooms if you want?" And nobody could answer that question. I'm opposed to the zoning change for a variety of reasons, and most of them have been fleshed out pretty well here. I'm not going to go into all the details. But there's one thing that I feel rather strongly about, and that is the Old Southwest Neighborhood Organization has spent a tremendous amount of time, money, effort, and so on, trying to keep Old Southwest as it is. There's some boarded-up homes and vacant lots and so forth and so on there, but generally, they've done a pretty good job, I think. And they have all sorts of standards. You know, if you buy a house that had a tin roof that's all rusted out, you can't put an asphalt roof on it. You've got to put a tin roof on it. No sale, right? So when I was at Highland Park School, the question, one of the teachers would always say, "Virginia, the land where liberty was born and died." Can we see a show of hands against the proposal or for the proposal? Against the proposal? For the proposal?
My name is Richard Rosario. I spoke to you all at the last meeting about Fortin Elm Avenue and the Ram House project, dealing with the homeless day shelter. That's not what I'm here to talk about this evening. I'm here to talk about the amendment that's on the table. Growing up in Orlando, Florida, in a major city, I grew up there since 1984 till about 2012. So I watched Orlando boom, growing up. I literally watched it boom. My grandmother worked very tirelessly as a realtor and with the city to try to rezone, just like you all are doing, in the name of equity. And they did this in downtown. They pulled it off. And there is the New Orlando Magic Arena, the TD Waterhouse is now on some of the property that my grandmother helped rezone, and two very large apartment complexes, skyscraper-style apartment complexes are there. That was completed back in around 2001, 2002. I watched them sit empty for about three to four years because everybody who lived in that area was the low-income. All their property that they had got taken, and they got priced out of everything that was built for them. So my question to the council about this would be, what guarantees do you all have that when you pass this, if you pass this, large corporations and large donors and large groups of investors aren't just going to come in here and create more equity problems by grabbing up all these swaths of land and then building what they want on them and pricing people out anyway? Furthermore, I would also like to know, with our antiquated gas and sewer system that we have in the city and is prone to flooding it in as it is, have we taken any of those into consideration? Are we being proactive to the problems that the community is obviously objectifying to? Are we really? Because I feel if we were, we would have a lot more interest in these questions, and the community wouldn't be sitting up here asking you them. And basically, I just implore you to be proactive instead of reactive. Thank you.
My name is James Settle, 929 Winona Avenue. I have purchased and rehabbed a couple derelict properties in the city and turned them into multifamily housing that are really nice apartments and good market rents. They're not the super-most expensive, and I try to keep them that way, just because I'm an ethical landlord. First question, six months this has been in place. Have we had like the doom and gloom that everybody suggests? I don't think anything's really happened. There's a book that was given to me, and I realized I had already read it. Everybody in this room should read it. It's called Walkable City by Jeff Speck, and talks about what we want in a walkable city. And I think that's what the crux of these zoning amendments are for. Density is good. It's more efficient for distribution of services. Utility lines, sewer, water, all that is much more efficient when there's more people living in a space rather than out in Diarly or Bodatot or anywhere where people are way-spread-out that need those same services. Sidewalks, street trees, you can put a lot more street trees in. If there's eight units on a lot, there's still street trees in front. And a diversity of housing types, interesting places to walk, interesting neighborhoods, interesting neighbors of different backgrounds, ages, aging in place. And what we really need, did you get my email about all the missing middle housing that's right in Old Southwest? That is beautiful and contributing structures. Please go around, take a tour, and see what these beautiful buildings are. And they're being well-maintained because of the historic district, and now they're legal to build again. So I think we should get on that. I think Mr. Culp and Dr. Brown did two really good appeals, and please listen to their, pay attention to their speeches as well. Thank you.
The next speakers, Jenny Waring, Court Rosen, and Alexander Boone.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am here on behalf of Central Church of the Brethren's Race Education Team. I am a member of that church and a member of the team. We are the church just down the street with the banners on the side of the street, on the side of the building. Sorry, I'm not... The banners have many messages. One of the banners is "Justice to End Racism." We have learned, as we have studied in our church, that racism takes many forms, and one of the most enduring and difficult to erase is systemic racism. Racism that is systemic is built into the structures of our society. One of those vestiges of systemic racism, of redlining and segregation, is single-family zoning laws. Quite literally, most residents in our single-family homes do not, aren't familiar with this vestige of racism and our history of racism and the history of the meaning of the single-family homes. These single-family home rules need to be eliminated. A step forward toward ending our one small aspect of A step forward toward ending our, one small aspect of systemic racism in Roanoke is voting yes for this amendment. Not all residents are opposed to this. Those that are have showed up, perhaps, but there are many residents who are in favor of this amendment as well. And you have heard from both, so don't let anyone tell you that you have not listened. You have listened. You may not agree, but you have listened. Thank you. Vote yes.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and Vice Mayor Cobb. My name is Alexander Boone. I'm excited to be here to discuss housing with you tonight. I mean, this is a very tough issue, and there's no one answer. And the zoning amendments are not the answer either, but they're a tool that we can use to support more affordable housing. Over the past number of years, we've had explosive increases in our development costs, our material costs, and our regulatory costs. And it creates a much more expensive lot, and it creates a much more expensive house remodel project. Those are the drivers of unaffordable housing. It all comes down to the cost of the lot. And when you look at what happened after the post-World War II zoning, they thought all the same type of houses should be in the same type of place. Well, that's socially wrong, but it's also, it's a terrible land use model. It eats up all the land for one type of housing. Not everybody can afford one type of housing. Not everybody wants one type of housing. And so when you look at where we are in the city, and you can look at, what's the worst thing that can happen when you look at all this density? And people think the worst. Well, we already have it, because when you look at pre-World War II zoning, it's all over our cherished cities, as Mr. Culp said. You look at Wasina, you look at Old Southwest, you look at Grandin, look at South Roanoke, you look at Raleigh Court. They all have multiple, many, many multi-housing projects in them, many multifamily apartments. You've got duplexes, you've got single-family attached. It's already here. It's not new. And so if we don't do some of these things, we're going to be left behind. The average house in Roanoke City is 10 years older than the average house in the United States. It's very expensive to remodel, and so you need the density to be able to get a number of units to divide that cost. It's just simple math. And if we don't do it, we can't grow as a city, we can't grow as a community because people don't have anywhere to live. We heard some of the young people here tonight, they couldn't afford a place to live. And so thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, glad this is a council meeting. It seemed like it was a city council candidate political rally for a while, so I'm glad we've gotten back to the policy. I'm here to encourage you to support the readoption of the zoning amendments. For decades, developers and builders have been pushed by localities to build artificially large lots. The very first community I worked on, I was told to do half-acre lots. This is incredibly inefficient land use. It not only increases the cost for those creating housing, it increases the cost for the locality who has to maintain the infrastructure. Most importantly, it drives up the cost of housing for citizens, as the cost to develop that infrastructure can't be spread across multiple units. You have an opportunity to, again, adopt text amendments to the zoning ordinance to accomplish a number of important things. Do away with restrictive zoning that has a history of being in place for the wrong reasons. Most efficiently use the remaining available but limited residential land and to help the city ease its severe housing shortage. Provide an opportunity for housing to be more affordable for consumers, as there is a direct correlation between the density of housing and the cost of that housing. And allow what is ultimately limited infill of vacant land that actually improves the fabric of a neighborhood by offering diverse housing. There are people I've spoken with whom I respect but whom I strongly disagree with on this topic. They've had conversations about how this would allow apartments and duplexes into their neighborhoods. And I reminded them that in their neighborhoods today, there are apartments and duplexes that are what they like about their villages. Some suggest a fear that multiple units on a corner would diminish the value of their single-family homes. My response to this is that the economics of real estate don't work that way, and that the fundamentals of real estate values would prove this to be untrue. I understand that much of the opposition is driven by the fear that the worst possible outcome will occur, but the design guidelines that your planners have put in place prevent the worst possible outcome from occurring. Roanoke is landlocked and in need of housing. Well, I'll end there, but I do want to say that I think what you were doing for Melrose Rugby and the Eureka Park is awesome, so thank you.
Good evening. My name's Allison Blanton. I'm here on behalf of the Roanoke Valley Preservation Foundation. As we've mentioned before, I don't want to make any mistake, we are completely in support of trying to increase affordable and diverse housing in Roanoke. However, we have big concerns about the way it's being done. We're just not sure that these zoning changes are the right way to do it. We're concerned about the increased density, the fact that it could encourage demolition of houses, historic houses, because it does increase the value of the land, possibly over the buildings themselves. And while y'all say that's unlikely, once it's available by right, there's no really stopping it, and you have to look far into the future to see what you might end up with. We're also very concerned about the historic neighborhoods that we have. They are really the foundation for the community that makes Roanoke such a great place to live. And that historic character, the design guidelines, there's, we, I agree, there's, some of our very best neighborhoods have very diverse housing, lots of different types, all that, but there's not enough design guidelines in these zoning amendments to really ensure that they're going to fit in with the character and build upon that character and promote that same sense of community that we have today. We'd encourage you all, rather than these broad-stroke zoning changes that really allow so much by right, to instead use some of the tools that are already in place, such as special exceptions, that would allow zoning increases, I mean, density increases to be made in a way that's very appropriate and specific to the context of the neighborhood in which it's proposed. We also encourage the use of other tools, such as density bonuses and set-asides and other kind of funding sources, because that's where you can build in the requirement that it actually addressed the affordable housing issues. So we just really are concerned that the zoning amendments, while they're trying to achieve an admirable and very important goal, they're not necessarily done, not necessarily the way to do it, and it's too broad of a stroke and runs too great of a risk to lose our neighborhoods. So let's, I think we can accomplish it. There's great potential to still get that done in perhaps just different ways. Thank you.
When I first moved to Roanoke, I lived in a 10-unit apartment building in Old Southwest on Day Avenue. Three of the surrounding houses had been converted into multi-unit dwellings averaging three to five apartments per building. That apartment allowed my wife and I to move to Roanoke to start med school before buying our first home in southeast Roanoke a year later at the age of 38. This experience mirrors a 2023 report found, that reported that by age 30, just 42% of millennials owned homes compared to 51% of baby boomers at the same age. So let's call this rezoning opposition what it is: wealth hoarding. Instead of celebrating the opportunity, this rezoning will bring to students, young professionals, and working-class families. Opponents have completely ignored the fact that this rezoning will result in incremental change over the next 40 years, averaging a total addition of 10 units per year, and not allowing these so-called high-rises that are going to pop up everywhere. In fact, the petition that over 400 wealthy homeowners signed in opposition to this reform contained many falsehoods and outright lies, without any data to back up their claims. I know where I've seen that playbook before. Those in opposition to rezoning sit in their mansions and complain about a hypothetical marginal depreciation of their hundreds of thousands of dollars of equity, while individuals with two and three jobs go hungry to pay their rent or sleep in their cars because they can't afford an apartment. To that, I say, shame on you. Shame on you for putting your greed before the basic dignity of your neighbors. Your calls for maintaining the essence of Roanoke clings to the idea of a past that never really existed. Because as we've already said, this kind of zoning already exists in Old Southwest and South Roanoke, yet this opposition came overwhelmingly from homeowners in those two neighborhoods. Which means that y'all don't have a problem with the zoning, you have a problem with us poor people in southeast and northwest benefiting from that zoning. As such, I strongly urge the council to continue to support the zoning reforms, reject these calls to maintain the status quo that only ever worked for wealthy white people, and vote for the future that Roanoke needs, that we all deserve.
Ooh, that's a tough act to follow. I urge you also to affirm your original decision with the zoning amendments, two reasons. One, it's really basic zoning principle, infill is better than sprawl. You pay now or you pay later. Also, the second reason is that I believe over 40% of the people who live in this city are working-class renters. And they're not really represented here well today, you know? And those are the people I think we have to keep into account. I rented for 30 years. Now I'm lucky enough to live in a single-family house, nice place, got this large lot next to me. Do you own or have that lot? Put some new neighbors in there? Oh, well, I'll welcome them, and I'll share the great amenities of this town with them. It's a great place to live. We shouldn't be excluding anybody. I'm also a small-time landlord in this town, and just a few years ago, three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath house, I was only getting $8.50 a month for. I was fine with that. That same house now, I could get $1,500, $1,600 a month for with my eyes closed, you know? And my current tenants can't afford that. The people who call me every week looking for a place can't afford that. These are the people that serve us. The waiter at Sixth and Sky, the new restaurant that's calling me. The prescription filler at CVS. The meat manager at Kroger. These are the people that serve us every day, and they're the ones with the housing authority. Not me. Don't worry about me. If you keep this ordinance going and we get a few more rentals, don't worry about me. I'll be okay, but it's other people in this community we got to be concerned of. And also, it's a great political time of year. When you hear Republicans calling for public housing and you guys spending money on it, it's a good sign.
And this is our last speaker, Anthony Peterson.
Okay, I know I only have two minutes, so I'm going to preface my bullet points with this. Ordaining of laws in favor of one part of the nation to the prejudice and oppression of another is certainly the most erroneous and mistaken policy. An equal dispensation of protection, rights, privileges, and advantages is what every part is entitled to and ought not to enjoy. Benjamin Franklin. There are issues on both, one end and the other regarding the zoning. I'm going to say no, and I'm going to try to get to the bullet points. I question how this 3,000 units are required, how that number was derived. I attended all the meetings, and we also inquired about how that was done. Perhaps more research needs to be done in determining exactly what type of units are required. Six and eight inspections, people fill six and eight inspections, and maybe that's an area that we could look into. Roanoke population is not going up, it's going down. As a resident council member, I mean, a resident member at Lincoln Terrace when I was in public housing, prior to the renovation, density was an obstacle for the residents. We reduced the density and changed the occupancy policy in conjunction with creating a safe environment for the residents, and crime went down on its own. We didn't have to send in the police force. It just simply, for lack of a better word, it relieved some of the stresses that the residents went through. Accessory dwellings, we need to look into that. Economics causes blightness. And also, one last thing is that the Virginia Housing Community Development Fund can examine the current housing opportunities. And that was from an article that I read from someone. And, oh, that's it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, let me take a five-minute recess. We're going to take a five-minute recess. And when I look at the face front-on and empty for a while, my heart opens up. I am much more aware, it's a bit uncomfortable, smaller, more experienced, and I'm just instinctively peeling away, and so that I don't have to see it. Yeah, let me put on my glasses. Now, I'm perfectly fine, right? I'm fine, yeah. In fact, the media knowledge of this is going on. I think I'm really clear this, but you have a question? Is it even on? For all those years, all those relationships, Jason has been seeing the world where distortions went, and he didn't know it. Yeah, but he knows, Jason has developed work around, and he didn't have before. Like, when we go out to dinner, he sits next to a person, not across from that. He also has green lights for his home. All of that was these things. Even his partner now, they've been together for a while. Do you think he's somebody that you could have the kind of relationships that you imagine as a child, like, you know? He doesn't try to live with somebody, or? Yeah. We've been together for a while, for about six months, and it was there. It's not just that places change, it's that I've built up a whole lifestyle of life, where I go to sleep very late, that I'm not alone, that I can spend a lot of time on this cell. I've built up a whole way of coping with this, and living with someone, really, I admire a lot of that. And it is very important. Do you think it will ever be a good community, really?
Go back.
Yes, sir.
All right, we've listened to all of you. Thank you for your comments. And I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. And I'll ask my colleagues for their comments, and I'm going to call on Mr. Volson to start us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, and thank you to everyone who's expressed their views on today's vote to reaffirm our zoning changes from March. I want to especially thank the planning and zoning team for their tireless work on this issue. They have gone above and beyond the normal call of duty, fielding questions, setting up meetings, creating reports, and being transparent with the community, all while being under increased pressure. You have this councilman's gratitude. Colleagues, as you know, I myself am an urban planner, and have thought in-depth about the issues that we are voting on today. I want my fellow citizens to know, pros and cons on both sides, we've heard them all, we've heard you. But I think the single most important reason for amending our zoning code is ending segregation. What started out as racially-exclusive covenants and deed restrictions in the early 1900s has turned into en masse use of zoning laws to perpetuate segregation. Single-family zoning was started in the early 1900s in Berkeley, California. White, wealthy developers at the time put gates around the neighborhood so no one of color could live there. They also used deed restrictions and covenants to keep people of color from buying into the neighborhood. But what about the neighborhoods that the developers couldn't control? Ah, what if we create a legal way to keep people out? What if we create zoning laws that require one lot to only have one home? It is the most expensive way to build, and will keep out the economically disadvantaged. Presto, single-family zoning was created. For over a century, the same reasons have been given for why we should keep single-family zoning. Back then, they said, "It will change the character of the neighborhood. It will bring crime. It will lower my property value." Does this sound familiar? And by the way, studies already debunked this idea that diversifying housing lowers property values. Single-family zoning quickly spread from Berkeley, California, all the way to Roanoke, Virginia, and has been the law of the land until this past March. In 1968, the Fair Housing Act was enacted. In it, the law ends open racial discrimination in housing. It also says, and this is something a lot of people forget, that we are to affirmatively further fair housing. I know that's a bit wonky, I'll say it again. Affirmatively further fair housing, which I would say in layman's terms means we must actively work to desegregate our local laws. The second part of the fair housing law has been easily forgotten over these years. I was eleven years old when Roanoke was named the city with the highest segregation in Virginia in 1997. And I won't mention the mayor who was running things, but he might be in this room. I then experienced in my teen years when my best friend lived north of the tracks. People continue to use the quadrants to stereotype others in different parts of the city. This has to end. When I ran for office, I spoke about building a better Roanoke. I believe that includes a diverse mix of housing across the city so anyone can have the opportunity to live in an area with good schools, or near their favorite restaurants, or near their family, or near a job. I want to make sure that there is room for everyone who wants to call Roanoke home, not just those that can currently afford it. Tonight, I think of the future of Roanoke and what our city can be. We are once again leading the way in our region, as Vice Mayor Cobb likes to say, a shining star on top of the mountain for our region. Tonight, I implore my colleagues on council to vote yes to these zoning amendments. Reaffirm our decision to be on the right side of history and end our zoning policies built on segregation, not perpetuate them. Thank you.
Ms. Whiteboard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say thank you all for your emails and for coming out tonight. I tried to respond to all of them, but I just couldn't keep up. But I just want to say thank you. I read them. I did try to reply. But Mr. Volson said something that reminded me of an encounter that I received when I first moved here to Roanoke in 1984. The first question people would ask me is, "Where do I live?" Because they want to know, because that defines where you are, northwest, southeast, where do you live? And the second question is, "Where do you go to church?" And I thought, that is very typical of Roanoke. But I want to say this, this zoning ordinance is certainly not perfect, like Virginia Sweet said. It is not perfect. But what it does do, it helps us with this exclusionary zoning. And I think the Planning Department has done an excellent job, because Roanoke's residential zoning districts cover just over half of Roanoke's land area. Most of those districts were exclusionary because they permitted only one type of housing, which was by right. These now formerly exclusionary districts cover about ninety-one percent of our residentially-zoned land. And so these zoning amendments, for me, it just made really important changes that relates to housing. You know, I had to look at the broad picture. And so as they were, as you guys were talking, I made some notes, and one of the things that came up was that it is going to ensure that we use the remaining pieces of land very efficiently. Number two, remove barriers for childcare and adult care. And we all know we need childcare and adult care. It is so important for working women and families. We've got to have some childcare, so that will remove those barriers. And number three, I'll just reiterate what has already been said, create economic diversity, social equity, and economic growth. And yes, we need affordable housing, and I know everybody's saying, "This is not going to create affordable housing." But it will help the middle missing housing and create luxury housing. We need luxury housing. We have all these doctors and lawyers who want to come to our beautiful city, and they can't come. But if we would allow for this amendment, we can open up some of that housing that is affordable, so that some of the other folks can move in who are looking for affordable housing. So there's a number of things that I think would be a benefit to this tax amendment. And I feel like we just need to give it a chance and look at the opportunities that it will present. So I am certainly in favor of these tax amendments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Ms. Moon is...
I'll take this side, Mr. Mayor, and I will stay within my two minutes. I'm going to stay with what I had said back in March, and as well as what I said in June, so I won't repeat myself. However, I am a strong believer in voices heard, voices matter. So I would like to publicly say thank you all for coming out, and based on my calculation, it's kind of evenly split. So that tells me that those that took the time to come wanted to be heard, and also those who sent emails, the majority of the emails was against. And just as my councilmember here said, she did answer some, but I have to confess, you know me, I answered all. All the way up to about two o'clock in the morning time, I made sure that I did answer you, because I don't like the thought of someone taking the time to send something and there's no response. So I did want to say publicly, thank you. Now, in researching, I like to research things, I looked at what was sent to the council by this city administration, by the Planning Department. And I looked at some of the models that were quoted, and they tend to come from the West Coast. And I read them and looked at what it said at the end of a couple, was that in trying to, and these are my words, because I didn't bring my notes, was, I looked at the pros and the cons, and the cons ended up saying that it still remained to be seen about the affordable housing, because it had not come to fruition. And so that in itself left me with another pause. And so I said, "Ugh, don't like that." And then I also, when I was at the City Planning Commission, and even no matter what was said, whether they were absent or not, the vote came in against this reform or this tax amendments. And so that in itself told me that I had, I should really look at the response that they gave. And I had an opportunity to talk with the commissioner that was present, that did give his vote, and I asked him, "Why did he vote against the zoning amendments?" And he felt that the matter should have been handled through the workforce development as well as economic development, which did not, I guess, did not have a part in that. So that left me with another pause. So with all of that said, and plus with us not having a manager at the present time, I really have reservations about moving forward, because I cannot, cannot just comprehend the fact that you're going to have a manager to come in when you got both sides here, mixed emotions, mixed feelings here, and they are having to deal with that. I would have preferred if we had tabled this until such time, but I know that is not going to be the case. But I want to let you know that I will stand on my vote that I made in March and the one as well as going into June. Thank you.
All right, everybody? Stevie?
I have a statement. I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And I would like to address something. I keep hearing that Roanoke City is not growing. We are growing. If you want to see growth, go to Roanoke City Schools, and you'll see the number of children that are there, and that we need to expand our schools. So if we were not growing, our schools would not be growing. So thank you for that. Affordable and diverse housing options are a critical part of maintaining a vibrant and inclusive community. This zoning change will create opportunities for different types of housing that address the needs of families, young professionals, and seniors. It reflects our city's commitment to ensuring that everyone has a place to call home. I understand that the zoning issue is a point of contention for some, but I firmly believe that the proposal, it is the best interest of our city's future. It provides a balanced path forward, blending the values of our community with the need of thoughtful progress. With that being said, I stand by my original vote. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not sure how I got here. Because when this came along earlier, I wasn't around. I'm not the most studious guy in the world, so I've had to spend a lot of time understanding the original intent, the time that has been spent gathering this information, and assembling it in a way that hopefully, you know, puts us in a position to make a decent decision for Roanoke. Most of all, I'm embarrassed, because I spent twelve years-plus on this council, and I didn't realize that we had segregation as zoning. And I apologize, because I never saw it that way. I've never seen it in an open way, but I'm embarrassed to think that we have let this go as long and as far as it's gone. This is a common sense decision to me, and all of us value our homes, but as others have said, in every single quadrant of the city, there are multifamily units today. They have been there my whole life, just about. I am amazed at some of the, I guess, emotion of some folks. I know you feel strongly. But some people who have called me and talked to me, this is deeper than what we've talked about tonight. This is, it has racial overtones. And I'll tell you about an experience when I was the chief negotiator for the city as Vice Mayor when we tried to consolidate. I was in a room with two members of the County Board of Supervisors, and the press happened to have left. And I told them how important it was for us to have a regional transit system. Valley Metro should serve the whole valley. You know what they said? "We don't want those people coming out here." I do not want to be part of a city that is anybody unwilling to accept other people fairly and equitably. And I think we're better than some of our neighbors. I think we prove it every day. But this is one of those issues that is in the way of us doing what is right, in my opinion. Once again, the mayor, when he called to ask me to fill in, he didn't say anything about this. So what I have, after a lot of study and a lot of praying, a lot of thinking, I think we have to do what I think is common sense and right, and that is put this in place. But that doesn't mean it has to stay in place forever, because if we're not changing it and making it better, we're not being good Roanokers. I was on the, and I'm mayor, I'm sorry, I might be going a little bit long. I was on the cabinet at Fairham College when I was the Vice President, and we would have things every Monday that came up that we talked about. One issue came up every Monday morning for five-and-a-half years, and we never voted on it. I was on the cabinet at Fairham College when I was the vice president, and we would have things every Monday that came up that we talked about. One issue came up every Monday morning for five and a half years, and we never voted on it. How can you change if you're unwilling to make a decision and move on? And if it doesn't work, you fix it and move on in another way. I'm voting for it because I believe it's the right thing to do. I think it's the Roanoke that I know and that I grew up with and whose people nurtured me and who I see today as a great medical center with so many young people wanting to come here. We need to have housing for all of these people and a place where they feel comfortable. And I'm so grateful for that young doctor who came today or tonight and spoke to us because it was clearly from the heart, and he's one of those that comes that we don't know about because we're the Roanokers who feel comfortable about who we are every day. So thank you so much for being here, for taking your personal time. This is not a fun kind of experience. It really isn't. And I'm really proud of each one of you for taking the time to come help us understand how you feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We are elected and appointed for such a time as this. I don't believe in tabling things. I don't believe in passing them off to the next council. We're elected for this moment, as we are for every moment. And since I've been on this council, we've had more transition than we've had in city administration. We've appointed four people to fill vacancies. And we've had elections, so there's always been transition on this council. But we've continued to make decisions that we believe are in the best interest of the city. I wanted to just talk about a couple of things that I heard tonight that were concerning, but also to celebrate the progress that we're making related to housing. We established a land bank five years ago. We currently have 20 properties that are a part of that land bank, and we've worked very assertively to make sure the General Assembly allows us extended authority. And what we've discovered recently is because property values have increased, not just in one part of the city, but every part of the city, so has the assessed values of even blighted properties that go into foreclosure. But because the guidelines are set that the assessed value has to be $75,000 or less, we're missing out on some properties that are blighted, boarded, and abandoned that we can't transfer to the land bank. So we're working on that. We established a housing trust fund. $2 million from ARPA funding, $250,000 additional from the EDA. We've already loaned out a million of that. We're making progress in that front. Where several people talked tonight about parking. I've heard stories, and I know that Grandin Road, if you just look at Grandin Road, just drive down Grandin Road from Memorial all the way to Patrick Henry High School, and you will see a beautiful mix of housing, from high-density apartments to huge homes. It's all there. And do you know why it developed that way? Because people rode streetcars to get home. The solution to reducing parking is increasing access to transit. We've added Metro Flex so that we could extend transit hours and Sunday service, but we are also a very car-centric community. And so I want for us to keep in mind that not only do we need transit extended into the whole region, but we need to grow it here so that we can increase peak routes, that we can have quicker service. And the more ridership increases based on need and housing proximity, that's going to happen naturally. Several people talked about our rotting water lines and our sewage system. Well, y'all need to do your research. Roanoke has made extraordinary advances in not only replacing water lines and bringing them up to date and in replacing sewage lines, but also gas lines. And the Stormwater Authority has made extr- trying to find the right word, incredible advances. We've seen flood mitigation to a degree that we've not seen in decades. And that's because of the work we've done to ensure that we have a robust infrastructure. Roanoke has the infrastructure we need. So I want to dismiss those charges. Now, is there work still to do? Certainly. But we're making incredible advances in that regard. The last thing I want to say is just to tell you a little bit about my story. I moved to Roanoke in 2001. It wasn't difficult to find housing. I wanted to have a small apartment that my older kids could stay with me in. So I was looking for something that was two-bedroom, that was affordable. And for me, about the top of what I could afford then was $550 a month. And I found something. And you know where I found it? A townhome on 24th Street in South Roanoke, close to the Village Center, close to the Star, and I loved it. Then I decided I wanted to buy my own home, and I had the ability to do that. And there were some places realtors wouldn't show me in Roanoke. And I said, I want you to show me every option in this city. I don't want to be limited by where you think I should live. I want to make that choice for myself. And I chose a home on Day Avenue, when Day Avenue was just starting to transition. And for years, I lived next door to a house that had amazing bones. It was owned by a slumlord. Slumlord didn't take care of it. So I hear the concerns about making sure that we're not letting more of those in. And the House Bill 802 in the General Assembly would give us more authority to fine those landlords and ask for damages on behalf of the city and return some of those properties to the city to rehabilitate. But all of that is to say, when that slumlord died, all of his properties went for sale, and nearly all of his homes were refurbished. Some of them for single-family, some of them for multifamily. And the house next to mine is now bed and breakfast. I currently live with my husband and our two children in a beautiful home that was built in 1913 in Old Southwest. On our side of the block, there are eight homes in one block. Only one of those homes is truly single-family, although all of them were built as single-family. All of them, with one exception, look like single-family homes, but they are multifamily dwellings, and they are kept immaculately. They look beautiful. So I don't buy this notion that the fear of seeing increased multifamily housing is going to ruin our neighborhoods. For me, one of the things I love about Old Southwest is that we have the historic overlay protections. We have neighborhood design guidelines. All of these things ensure that we have the ability to protect the design in our neighborhoods. We're not going to see high rises go up where they shouldn't. We're not going to see ridiculous builds go up where they shouldn't. The last thing I want to share is this. I've tried to look at this from a lot of different angles. And in the reading that I've done, and if you've not read the book, The Color of Law, about the history of redlining, I would urge all of you to read it. But I found myself asking this question. What does it feel like to experience exclusionary zoning? What does it feel like to be on the receiving end of exclusionary zoning? And tonight, we've heard stories related not only to segregation of race, but income, and I would dare offer age. We have many senior adults who cannot age in place here because they cannot afford, nor can they find a place to live. These zoning amendments help us get there. They're not everything, but they're a piece of the puzzle, and I fully support them. Thank you.
All right, finally, let me say, first of all, I want to thank our planning staff, the chitm for the work that y'all have done throughout this process. You've taken, I think, some unnecessary criticism, but you stayed true to the course. So thank you, and please share my thoughts to the other staff. Well, I think I don't, do not want to be redundant, but we've had some people and to say some things tonight that concern me. But I realize that we've got to think forward. We've got to go forward. When I heard terms like segregation and race, you know, I grew up really in that kind of environment. I don't want Roanoke to go back. I don't want to go back. We've got to keep working to do what I think is the right thing. And as Councilman Volson was talking about how this started initially and what did that and what brought on this type of zoning, the redlining, all those kinds of terms. We've got to be bigger than that in Roanoke. We're a star city. We're a eight-time All-American city. And I think it's important that we do, this council do what is the right thing. I feel, and I'm proud of each one of them for making that commitment because there's a challenge, because we all want to please many of you. We recognize that you put us in these seats to do those things, and it's a tough, sometimes it's a tough decisions. And it's some things that have to be done, and we're thinking, we're thinking that we're doing the right thing here. I feel that it is. And so when we talk about, when many say you don't hear us, we hear you, as I think somebody said earlier. They may disagree, but you put us in positions to keep Roanoke going forward, to keep Roanoke going forward. And I think tonight, we're doing that in terms of making those tough decisions. And I don't want to put this in the hand of the Planning Commission, and I thank them for the work that they did and those folks, which way they voted. But I'm really appreciative of the work that this council is doing. We talked a lot about this, and I think that we're doing the right thing. And again, we see people that are leaving the city to find housing, as the doctor mentioned today, and there's data that shows that. And that as we go forward, we want to make sure that people can have a place to stay, they can be comfortable, and make sure that their lives and children grow up in a place that's diverse and inclusive. And that's so important today. So tonight, belabor the point and thank you all for talking about the 800-pound gorilla that's in the room. Nobody wants to talk about it, but those terms are ugly terms, that's segregation and racism. We don't want to get mugged down in there. And so I'm going to support my colleagues in voting to accept the amendments, and I think we're going to be better for it as we go forward. So thank you all, and I'll ask the clerk now to please call the roll. Let me just say one other thing. It's an old saying that I heard, that if you don't grow, you die. Think about that. If you're not growing, anything that's not growing is going to die. And we want to keep growing, keep growing. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
No.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. So the amendments pass. Thank you all.
I mean, that's, that's, we could just, you got to break it to Chipperley. You want me to come over there and do it? You want, you want, you want me to go to dinner with y'all, break it to her gently?
All right, we got some more work to do. We got some to do. Got to hear the citizens. Don't go anywhere too far.
It works.
We still have some other items on the agenda. Madam Clerk, we're down to the hearing of citizens upon public matters.
I only have one speaker.
We only have one?
One speaker.
Well, I don't, I don't have, I don't have a form for you. How did you sign up?
I signed up online.
Oh, when did you sign up online? We've been checking all afternoon.
I signed up the same time I signed up for the conference.
She was on the thing for the other. Well, if you stayed at 9:15, I'll learn. You're welcome to. Is that the only person? You're welcome to speak now.
One other person. No, 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 I don't believe she's here.
Give us your name.
I'm Fraser. I spoke earlier. I've been a resident of Roanoke since 2018. So thank you for listening to me speak again. I will try to make this under two minutes. I have now regularly spoken to you all to advocate for adding and passing a resolution for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza, particularly through an arms embargo. And as I reflect on the time since I first did before you all about this matter, I'm sad to admit, I find myself deeply disappointed. I am not sure if you all realize how your actions and lack thereof can and has diminished your constituents' trust and their representatives. To be clear, I realize that this resolution is largely symbolic and gesture, just like the statement in support of Ukraine was a few years ago. But this, even this bare minimum, this bare minimum is not even being done for Palestine. I'm sad to say that I am greatly disheartened by the lack of transparency, communication, and action in regard to this incredibly important matter, especially after I've heard and watched numerous people of our community present to you devastating statistics, heartbreaking personal stories, and reasons for why this matter is in the scope of your power to do what is right, to use your platform to advocate for peace and hope. I love this city, and I deeply care about the hard work that must be done to improve things here like housing, safety, and well-being. I voted for almost all of you who were elected to sit in this chamber and represent my voice, but I, I'm not so sure if I trust in you anymore. And it's, while I will continue to implore and to take action for this matter, I do encourage you all to use your conviction, to vocalize your support for a ceasefire resolution via an arms embargo. And I hope, I hope you will add this to the agenda and vote to pass it. Thank you.
And then the last speaker is Kathy Carter. She's not here.
Kathy Carter's not here?
No, she's not.
Okay. All right, there being no further business to come forth before the council, this council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.